Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Call the meeting to order because it's 5:30. Is Jason in our?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Jason. I'm going to let you read the pledge of allegiance. It's your turn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, number nine, what's one? Communications and public comment. Okay, we'll turn the chat off then at this time. Review and approve the board minutes for November 1st. Have a motion to that.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 1st.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any corrections? If there are none, let me take the vote. Jason Johnson?
No, I'm good.
Okay, do you approve the minutes?
Yes, I do approve the minutes. Sorry, I was testing the microphone.
Sorry, that's okay. And I get this? Yes. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, and I do so that minutes have been approved. I'm going to try to keep everything to well under five minutes, hopefully as close to a minute as we can, so that we can get to the budget draft, which is down under D. So principals' reports, Laura, would you like to start?
Sure. Yeah, I tried to keep mine brief because they did your email. So we are at 74 students. We've had a wonderful Veterans Day presentation on November 10th. Four guests from the American Legion of Glory, Dallas Falls, Martha Smith, Helen Gaidas, Angela Ledu, and Judy Smith all came to our school. And we had it outside, of course. And each student was presented with a flag. We learned a lot about our flag, flag etiquette, as well as a box of pencils. And fourth grade was presented with two big boxes of school supplies, given the auxiliary work with more gifts and education. So we have students sign two giant posters for the veterans of the American Legion. And then we've got two Dallas Falls veterans, the VA, their residents of the VA, and Bennington. So we sent over a bunch of cards and pictures for them. Update on the name of plow, general. So Arctic Fox won. So our plow is named Arctic Fox. And on Wednesday, Vtrans will be at our school at 9:00 AM, as well as at every other school in the state of Vermont that decided to move the truck, with our school's name as well as our student name. What was your question? Arctic Fox. That's what I heard. Yeah, thank you. This coming Friday, and I'm not going to pronounce her name right, and we've only emailed, so I don't have the correct pronunciation, but maybe someone can help me. This coming Friday, Ella Cad Martori. Did I get that right?
She was Ellen Williams, wasn't she?
Ellen, she was Ellen Williams. She's with Free to Read Every Day, the Free to Read Every Day program, which is sponsored by the Dallas Falls Brewery. And she's bringing bags filled with books to our portraiters to take home, which is incredible. Students are going to celebrate and participate by dressing up as their favorite books or literature in honor of the event. So we're looking forward to that. So we're both with the Veterans Day presentation and with this. And also Vtrans, completely grateful for the community connections and generosity. We have a giant tree of thanks up in our lobby. And this week, we're adding leaves of gratitude. So each student and staff member is invited to pull out a leaf with something that they're thankful and grateful for, and we'll add that to our tree. So make sure to look for pictures in our newsletter. We are currently implementing both surveillance testing on Tuesdays and then the test to stay program. And our biggest challenge, as we discussed at the last board meeting, is self-repeating coverage for when staff members are out. Report cards go home on Friday. Very good conferences are on Monday. In-service on Tuesday, all of our responsive classroom.
You have any questions for Laura? I'm here for your report card. I appreciate it.
Carrie?
Sure. So Central School is still staying at 150 students. We're consistent. And we just are finishing the end of trimester one, as Laura was mentioning as well. So we have a lot of things that we're wrapping up. And I do want to thank all of our students and families. We've had some challenges this year for COVID. We were really making it all work for students to stay in school. They also did some Veterans Day cards the other day. We were able to send to the American Legion and some local veterans to thank them for their service. And we thank the students for creating the cards. Report cards will be sent home similarly with Laura on the 19th, and then the conferences will be on the 22nd. And so make sure you've scheduled with your family, if families make sure you're scheduled with your teachers, so you have a conference set up ready to go. There is no schools, Laura was saying, on Tuesday, the 23rd, for professional development. We're doing responsive classroom training. And then there's no school for Wednesday to Friday for the Thanksgiving break. Also, we're willing to thank Cards Place and some turkey donations that we have. So some families will be winning a raffle. Details will be going out tomorrow, so we'll notify those that are running. And we also have the Maple Machine is the name of our plow. And so they will be coming on 17th in Vtrans. So the Maple Machine will visit, and the students will get a chance to go outside and see what the plow looks like. So, and again, I just want to thank all the families and staff for working around the test to stay program. So we do have a classroom doing it right now. There's 11 students participating in that, staying in school. So we're also doing the surveillance testing and working around COVID positives, unfortunately. So I do appreciate Jen Burke and Mrs. Rounds for all of their work on getting contact tracing done and making sure students and staff are safe and everybody's notified, of course, to the Department of Health. Nurse Rebecca Stockwell has been a great resource, too, while working with us and trying to make sure everything from the nursing team, but the whole nursing team deserves a shout out. They are just doing so much work every day. We really appreciate that. So we are working to hire, we're one step closer to hiring a health office assistant. So hopefully we'll have somebody onboard after Thanksgiving to help Nurse Jen get all the testing and everything else done, and that is funded through ESSER. And we're just working right now, finalizing the vaccine clinic. We had the first one coming up, or we had the first one last week. We had 145 students. A third of them were from Central, a third of them are still working in the middle school, and then a third were from some surrounding schools throughout the state. Many from the SU, so that was really positive. And then we have the next one coming up on the 30th of November, and so that'll be part two. So hopefully, very soon, we will have a good chunk of students that are fully vaccinated. And that's pretty much about it. We hope everybody has a happy, healthy Thanksgiving and is very safe. Any questions?
Just finally, on the 9th, when we had the clinic. Were you pleased with the turnout for Central?
Yes, absolutely. So we had about, again, a third of our students in this whole school that were able to participate and get at least first vaccine. So it's a little bit under the third of the school. And then to be able to get the middle school students and families were fabulous, bringing the students in, getting them ready, and very little hiccups or anything like that to work on. And so just making sure we know what to do for the next time. And we got a video going for the kids to watch while they're waiting. And, you know, very few tears, which was great. And the students were able to go back to class and get right back to learning where they went with their families if they just moved off, you know, brought in from another school.
Now, on the 30th, will you do second shots and first shots?
Just the second shot. So it's only open to the ones who had already gotten the first one there.
Yeah, they spare one plan though for another.
So they'll be coming up at other schools, and so families who have not gotten it right now will be able to go to another school or their own pediatrician's office. We do want to thank Dr. Holly, who was able to come through our virtual Zoom meeting and just discussing what's happening. And so it was really helpful with the Department of Health and just getting everybody updated on what's to do with the vaccines, the clinic this one and the next one. There will be some, Laura's, I think Wade Saxon will have one in January. Westminster School will have one in January. And Racton has already started there. They went last Friday, and then they go again right after the week. On the 13th of December.
Laura, yours is in January, or?
Yes, the date's been changed a couple of times, so.
The 7th of January.
But the regular health department, too, they can sign up for some of those as well. So there's opportunities for them as well. So we can just be encouraging. That's to do that.
There's a lot of pediatric clinics that open to anyone that needs to sign up for a school or anything like that. And we push those out every time we've had a quick down. I will recall, so they're at the bottom of the order.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This last month has been busy with students completing many projects for their classes. Nurse Cad, who is a hero, by the way, has also been extremely busy with surveillance testing. Today, we did eye screenings for all of our fifth and seventh graders and our test to stay protocols. We had a great turnout from the middle school to the vaccination clinic that was held at Central. I'd like to compliment Carrie and her staff on how they put that together. I escorted a student down, and it was a very well orchestrated event, and everything went off without a hitch. Our conferences are scheduled for November 22nd and 23rd. Signups are posted on the school website and also on Facebook. Middle School would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hope everyone has a safe holiday. We have, we've had an increase in our enrollment by one. We now have 229 students. Thank you.
Any questions? In order to have a review of Zoom, but can you talk me through a test to stay, what it looks like in our schools? Because I've read through the emails, but what does it look like when there's been an exposure in our schools? Just walk me through anybody.
That's just a good example. So this morning, we had the students come in. I know a couple of the schools did a little bit differently. All of our students that came in from third grade went into the gym. They were distanced, and they went over. They were called to come do their, it's just a quick nasal Q-tips test. So just so people are not confused, it's not the big bill one. So it's just a quick, they have to do 15 seconds on this side, 15 seconds on the other side with the Q-tip. It goes into a vial, actually, and it gets tested right away. It's a little bit different than the surveillance testing, which is sent out.
Right.
And so we basically have a little card. It's actually very similar to a pregnancy test, and so it shows up with one line or two lines. And so if they're positive, it has two lines, and if they're negative, one line. And so it basically is, if they're registered, everybody's registered through the Department of Health. And so when they, as soon as we do the testing, we have to wait 15 minutes, and then the families will get a text right away. And it just says whether they're positive or negative. And so if it's positive, you would have to, you know, work around that. But if they're negative, they can just go back to class. And so everybody is have breakfast while they're sitting and waiting. If there's anything different, you can chime in, they're yours. And then families who just notified, so this morning, we had families sit in the car. We just gave them a thumbs up. Yep, they're good to go. And they said they already got the text.
And the same thing for seven days. So the family kind of waits. Okay, okay.
Yep, so.
So it's definitely a two-person operation. And it's not something that one person can do. We know it can be a logistical kind of craziness, but definitely, you know, setting up kids, you know, having some pretty good to do and distracting. But there's like five drops that have to be done on the card, and you have to stick the thing in there and twist it. Each one of those, I mean, if you think about it, I mean, I have no idea. When you're doing 10 of those or 15, it takes time. And then someone has to log that into the computer to push the button to start the timer. And that's how, then, once the timer goes off, and you check it to see, we have to buy, are you pregnant or not pregnant? Right? Because this really is.
It's literally.
Then someone has to go back into the computer and log it in before the text could go. So it's not automated that way. So it does.
Firehouse.
It does, it takes some, a little bit of creativity. And, but, you know, we were able to last week kind of pilot it up at drafting, because we had a small number, Westminster the next day after we looked up the bugs, and then just blast on, right in, and it's, you know, then full go from there.
So today was the very first day at the middle school.
Wonderful thing to be able to cut down on students being out of school.
And it's, the other part is that once a close contact has been identified, so once we identify that they're unvaccinated, so then, like the next day, you start the seven o'clock. If you go into a weekend or a holiday, you don't have to come in and test on those days. So you then just test on Monday and consider your seventh day.
Okay.
It's the exact same test that you can buy over the calendar, like you do with 36 hours in between. So it's the exact same test for that.
And these are basis and metrics. But they're going to go right to class after that, and then just continue on.
And then if a student is, if a student comes back positive on the antigen test or the test to stay, that's considered a positive. And so that student is asked to go home and form a positive report. If a student, if it's inconclusive, or later they're symptomatic, we then have the PCR test, which is the same as our surveillance test, that we can give that person right away, and that has to be mailed out. And the next day, we get the results back. But if the person is, they get symptomatic, it doesn't matter, they could just have got a whole bunch of dust in their mouth. But symptomatic, they go home. And so they don't start that whole process. So it's a lot of balls in the air, and as every one of them has said, the nurses is in there in huge.
Sorry, we do appreciate all of much. Any other questions? Or a question? Jason, did you have anything that you want to ask any of our principals?
Just an overall, how is the morale of the students in general? Are they holding up, or are they going a little COVID bonkers? Or how are things getting along here?
I'd say, I'll jump in here. I'd say for the middle school, they just are kind of rolling with everything, just kind of going with the flow. You know, I hand out about 100 masks every morning in front of the school for kids who don't have them. But the kids, they wear their mask throughout the day. The kids that have to do surveillance testing seem to just roll with it. I wouldn't say it's causing, I think it, I think it causes more headaches for the adults than it does the kids.
The same for us. The kids are just rolling with it, and they're just going along. They're grateful to be at school for today, so they're fine for the test to stay. And I mean, I think, good or bad, whether people agree with it or not, they're just so used to it. I mean, the PCR testing and things we do is very quick. It's just a Q-tip, and they're just done, and it's a very quick process. And it goes right out, and they get the results. And I do appreciate, we did shift our day for testing from Thursdays to Tuesdays, so we can result not on a Saturday, so the nurses aren't spending their whole weekends contact tracing when they are positive. So that's been a helpful change, too. But it's, the kids adjust fine. I agree. It's adults that are infected more or have a harder time with it.
Why is that?
Well, it's just so time consuming. And like for Nurse Cad, you know, we have a big building, we have 229 kids, and we don't have an assistant for her. So like today, she's at 8:00 this morning, she's juggling administering meds, she's doing test to stay, she's trying to set things up for vision screening, and she's by herself in there. And, you know, I go in and try to help as best I can, but I think I'm more of a hindrance than help some days. So it's, it really impacts her in trying to get everything done. And, you know, when you have students who are on meds, they have to be administered at a certain time. And so all of this other, you might have to navigate all of these pieces to make it work. And as for the, as for the adults in the building, you know, kids being called out to come down and get tested, and then, so they're leaving the class, they're going back to the class, or they're not going back to the class. And so there's a, you know, that, it's not a smooth day, because there's always this transition back and forth. And if you have kids out for a period of time, and then they come back, even if they've done work online, they've missed the reconstruction, now you've got to catch them up. And so you always, at least here, we've always got kids coming and going, one way or the other. And so it really impacts the adults and the fluidity of what we're trying to do on an everyday basis. But, you know, at the end of the day, we make it work.
What a clue that's got to all of you. And those staff members all the way down to the children. Okay. Next on the agenda is policy. And this is the special education policy. It was listed as G10 in our books previously. And so it's one of those mandatory ones that has come up on the state. So what we did was the policy committee met, and we have, I'm just going to read you the changes, and then the regular, the whole thing will be out there and posted for any of the community to look at, with the idea that since our next meeting is just geared to budget, we won't probably adopt it at our next meeting, but we'll adopt it after the following one. You have to have 10 days for the public to be able to respond or any response. So the changes involve two paragraphs, basically two paragraphs. The agency of education, as the state education agency, is responsible for the overall provision of a free, appropriate public education to eligible Vermont students with disabilities, and does this for the implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The Rockingham School District will use the guidelines developed by the Vermont Agency of Education in its most current edition of the Vermont Special Education Procedures and Practices Manual regarding special education issues. The manual is designed to assist Vermont school districts in understanding the provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act and meeting its requirements. The manual can be found on the Vermont Agency of Education's website. Those are the paragraphs we're going to insert right after the first paragraph. Everything else in the policy of G10 will simply move to D7, which is where the state has it listed. And we're trying to get our manual to coincide with all of their numbers to make it easier for finding stuff when they bring it up on the website, that we have to update it or new mandatory policies. Basically, that's it. We want to know where the changes were. And like I said, you can find those, they should be posted for you to be able to view the entire thing. Everything else stays the same. Any questions on that or the other stuff? Okay, let's go on. Finish business. Just a very quick update on the crossing guards.
Yeah, Green Mountain started today. We're able to get a contract worked out with them. So Cass Wright is going to be back in the morning in the afternoon. The Dallas Falls Police have, you know, committed to having a car there in the afternoon with an officer, if that's permitted, because obviously if he had an apology or something like that, they're not going to be able to be there, but there's going to be a resource there, which is great. There's a speed indicator up there. I think it's going north on Ickenson Street. It seemed like the lights have been out, the flashing lights, so Scott Pickups is going to work on that, but that kind of, if that picks up as soon as possible. Mr. De Bell and I have the.
Sorry? I think they replaced those.
Oh, awesome. All right, cool.
It's working, going south, but it was what I always, so it was working tonight and the speed.
I just got my email, so I saw it just before the meeting here. So, thank you. But Mr. De Bell and I have been able to have some time out there, some quality time out, being crossing guards, made some good friends, which is great. But spent my last day in the pouring rain, which was perfect, and gave me all the appreciation for what they do out there. So we should be set to go. But we'll continue to keep, you know, working on it. We've got to get, you know, begin the, our awareness campaign here in the middle of the city.
Sounds good. Glad, glad we're making progress on that. Any other questions from anyone? Did you guys decide to start hurving across the street for him, or how's that going?
You know.
Hurving the middle school masks?
When I was out there, I didn't see that as so much of an issue. There were times where you had kids crossing at both ways, and it was easier to go out in the middle of the street and stop some both sides to go at the same time, or just stand there so they could do the figure four pattern, which I had one young man do on a bicycle. But it wasn't, maybe it's the weather at this time, and not, you know, it's not closer to summer or spring, you know, where you might get a horde of kids. But I didn't see that. I don't know if you saw.
They gave them like two or three masks, you know, first from Central and then from the middle.
Yeah. But I was expecting to see this.
Zombie.
Yeah, the zombie of alcohol coming down the street, which I didn't see. And the kids are by far wonderful, just, you know, very polite.
It's good to see a little bit, sorry for that. And with Cass, he's been doing it for several years, so he should be, you know, he's comfortable with what he's done. He probably has spirit, and I'm going to adjust for what he, for what he wants as well, whereas the rest of you, you're kind of.
We were hacks at A at B, hacks at B.
Right. Okay, so we had a B, state guidelines update, keeping students safe. We've kind of talked about that. I know there was an issue, and I've heard several things about it since the last one, about masking and to sit on when students are outside. I know I went by the playground one day, everybody was running in the middle between the George Street side, and every child had their mask on, and they were well distanced. So I was kind of questioning whether those kids had been allowed to have their masks off and do that outside, because I think there's value in training students that there are times that they can take them off versus times that they absolutely need to be on there. So that kind of is probably still an issue. I'm still hearing from parents that kids are being told they have to wear them. So I don't know where you guys are at, but maybe just really being aware that we are still getting threats on that and maybe training them when they can take them off, because it is good to learn that outside is a safe, especially with the new protocols of saying that outside, they're not even considered a close contact. So it's one of those, these are guidelines.
We do not require them, and we like, as well, like when you're outside, you're listed, you can take your mask off. It's just very interesting how many choose to keep them on, like even, you know, Veterans Day presentation and the foil off, because I think, remember, you guys can take your masks off, because we had the chairs all spaced out and not even have, like, removed them. So it's a personal choice. We're given the option.
So that's something. And we realize that that can happen as well, but just be aware, that you're, and you're being sure to let them know, because it's, like I said, it's training. All of us, you know, we're fixing ourselves outside. I know a lot from the, going to the car, and I'm thinking, oh, I couldn't take my mask off in the middle of the car. So I know that happens, but yet it's a training thing so that we're, because I think this is going on for.
Many kids prefer it. It's just like a scarf. They like to have it, and they like to wear their mask outside when it's cold out. So many kids just prefer to do it. So they've told they can take it off, but I'm not going to force them to take it off.
No, and as, as the little gets, gets older.
Yeah, so they, many of them choose to just keep it on. They're comfortable with it. Kids are much more resilient than adults, I think. They're just accommodating, you know, the type of itself.
So just, just the awareness to leave your life.
Absolutely.
We've kind of done the vaccination clinics, if, unless there's something else you want to add, Mr. Ross?
No, I think, I think echo what Susan said, that, you know, Carrie and her staff did not stand a job, you know? At 8:30, we were all kind of a little. At 8:30, we were all kind of a little hesitant because it looked like we wanted to come together. And then the Department of Health, like, just snapped and the whole thing went smoothly. It was great to see parents in there. It was great to see, you know, even the staff talking, you know? Kids, kids that were in, my big thing was you've got a kid who's going to come out of a classroom, there's no parent there. How are they going to respond? And to see the way the kids responded to that and the way staff was there to support kids, it was phenomenal. So it was great to get shots in arms.
And then you mentioned to me, there was one, like, if their parent was there with an older student, they pulled the other student.
Yep, yep. So they tried to get the two kids at the same time and accommodate the parent, so that worked out.
Thank you. All right, we're on budget draft. And we are waiting for an hour and a half maximum, working on this for tonight. So if we can start with the idea of maybe looking at each one for a half an hour and letting you get a quick overview of what your needs are. And then we can have, or we can ask questions, keeping in mind that I'm sure there will be more questions later as well. But that at least will get us started with this. So let's start with Saxon River.
Okay, so my goal was to try to keep it as level funded as possible, physically responsible, but also to make the new students. So you can see many of the line items are similar, if not, there's a decrease. All of the technology line items, if the items provided and the custodial item fiction provided. Let's see.
Can I ask one question? Can, can, what, I think, what is the difference between the colors?
So your top section, that's in pink-ish color right here on the screen, that is salary. The next section, which is kind of a purplish color, is benefits. And then the last section is what we would call miscellaneous or other things that moves it, so.
It helps. Everything that starts with a 51 in the, in the deep column, which is account. All of those 51s are all salaries. Everything 52 is benefits. And anything after 52, which is 53 and on, they're all miscellaneous lines. That's how it is on the code.
So, so many of the things in the middle section, we have no control over. Because those are health benefits and things we have to provide in that sense.
No, that's fine. Stop me at any time. So let's see. So the big, I mean, the big adjustments, as, as you can see, specifically we're in custodial means and then a human technology, although there was some balancing out with some line items going up and some line items going down for various reasons. We can certainly share if you'd like to know more about that in particular. But if you look at the line items in last year, it was a very similar. We did make, which is not represented in the copy that you have. Just making sure. So the original, in the original custodial budget, the capital improvements were at $205,000 tickets. So that obviously is a huge jump. And then in meeting today, much of that would be covered by Ester. So that line item is going down to.
Can you give me a number?
So line, yeah, line 81?
That line is, that line item, we're going to specifically just pull out a flagpole installation. Because a lot of those things, remember? And then they're re-filing several classrooms, so there'll be 7,500 in that line. And that's a significant decrease.
I think on your.
205,000.
I was just saying, 1,500.
So 1,500.
What is, do they have a different version than, do they have the same version that you?
They have a version, yes, but it's the version that when it got printed, because it.
Ah, okay.
So if anything got changed, there might be some slight change.
Okay. The original request included.
Oh, no, I, I know, but what was your, you adjusted them?
Oh, to 7,500.
That's what it says.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so you're like, you're different, all different versions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about specific lines.
Let's go back and we'll get these by pages.
Sure.
That way, that way I can get all the board members to be able to have a chance to ask questions. Do you have questions on the first page 12?
Well, as, as everyone knows, what drives, what drives your budget is the number of adults that you have in the building, okay? And so you, you have provided us a couple of things, you know, this, this presentation. And I was just going to, just going to go over that, because it deals with the, with the staffing level, which I'm sure this staffing level is what's expected to be, except for print or Ester funded.
Does it show, does those come out of the ESU budget?
Right. So the, you have five classroom teachers, day through four, right? Point four, art, music, library, and PE. Of one guidance. Now, that, that position was not filled this year, is that correct?
Oh, no, the librarian position is not currently.
Okay, all right.
We do have a full-time.
You have a full, full-time guidance?
Yes, and she also does all of our ESC and FALF.
There is a half of a school-based clinician that we shared with someone, that we used to do with HCRS. That wasn't, that hasn't been filled this year.
Now, the, this one shows one nurse. And then point five, school-based dental health clinicians, that doesn't have.
That's a school-based, yes.
And that's, that's in our budget now. It's not, it's not, we don't get any help there.
Right, it's in, half of it's in the, in the budget that I.
The, the reason, typical student services would sometimes provide that service to buildings because it would be in students' IEPs as a needed service. However, the students, well, students with IEPs at Saxon River do not have that need. And so to provide that level of mental health care that students may need, that's where the building will pick that up through a local authority.
And that's in addition to the guidance practice goes on. Is the guidance teacher also a clinician?
No, she is not. She was school counseling.
It's like I said, it's like.
The, the, the special education teacher, that, that's part of the issue for allocation, right? And then you have interventionalist, you have a titled, a titled teacher, an Ester teacher. And then you've got this other interventionalist.
Correct. Building-based interventionist, so it's created of the local budget. So the title one is covered on the school one. The Ester is new this year. So it's an intervention, interventionist slash building substitute. So that person is used, well, right now, more often than not, as I've already said, than interventionists, because of the challenges in access. So there are three different parts.
Because I think, yeah, could I, that's the one, that's the position that I question. Not to make any decisions tonight, but question that position, particularly in terms of the, you know, the COVID concerns that have added to your needs. And the fact that we have some Ester on this, help us with that for coming. I think that the, I question that position.
I think, what, what do you mean? To the position itself, or shift it to something?
To the position itself. I think the, the sub-issue is a, is a problem that we have to deal with. And I think the, and as we go through the budget after tonight, you know, dealing with, how we're going to deal with that issue, might have some resolutions at this particular mission. But I think the, you know, the idea of having somebody on deck with health benefits and everything like that, because you can't get substitutes and then also budget for substitutes, then, you know, you're just, you're just overloading, I think. I mean, it's just my opinion, but I just want to, I want to raise it so that you're aware of it.
No, I, I do hear you. The academic need is certainly there. The interventionists are, you know, their schedules are full and their data definitely supports the need. I did hear what you're saying about, you know, whether it could be shifted funding, given the Ester, the Ester grant. They cannot be, I don't believe, shifted to title one, because we're allocated so much for each school. So whether it shifts from the local to Ester.
Could I just advocate and jump into, one of the benefits of having this full-time person is obviously their, the day-to-day sub or your need sub. But then it's also the tension was, potentially if you get a new person coming in, a new teacher, they have a chance to get to see all the different grades and then hopefully you would feed right into any openings that are happening others immediately in your building or within the ACU too. And so then that person's been trained, they've had PT, they've had a chance to be on your staff. And so it's not the learning curve that you have, so a brand new teacher coming in. So that was the forward-thinking part of having this position. And so then you have a P person who's there to be ready on the same day as having heart, but then also you're investing in the future ACU part, so you don't have a turnover, hopefully. And then they want to be in part of the district and be a part of that too, in any opening that's coming up. So it's not all of a sudden, be hopeful with, and then potentially you have to fill in some position again, but it's only to fill the sub, hopefully, with that long-term part. So it is, it is an issue that the board has said that we're not getting the day-to-day sub part because, you know, the money isn't all at grade if you're a certified teacher and then you don't have the benefits. So this was sort of the part where giving them the benefits, allow them to come into the building and yet, you know, not take a job at another district, somewhere else that would be.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful thing. Money is no object.
Right, no, I hear you.
You know what I'm saying? Just, I think the other, the other issue I just wanted to highlight, because I certainly agree that you should have a second grade teacher at Saxon River. And I think the census of the, the second grade might provide an opportunity where you could have one fewer class at Central, but still have, you know, one, one Central room and one at Saxon River, not have a second grade class.
For second grade or third grade?
Is it first?
First grade, both. Both buildings have, both are.
Is it first?
So next year, maybe next year, yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at second grade, yeah, yeah, the second grade, so. But anyway, I think certainly having a second grade teacher at yours is helpful. Okay, those are, those are just two more questions.
Okay, so the substitutes on here, is that substitutes that you have now in the building? Because I know on the warrants, they kind of, they will not hear any calls for substitutes, is that Ester funds?
No, the substitute line item, is that what you're speaking to?
We don't have subs. That's the problem.
But I mean, it's listed on here as substitute, so.
That's money set aside to pay substitutes that do come in. So we do have subs that come in. And so their daily rate is deducted from that line item weekly. It hasn't been, been deducted, it's not being paid through Ester funds.
No, it's not been.
Because I haven't seen.
No, I, I'm just wondering too.
It's that it comes to, to come out. So if we haven't got a time sheet of substitutes for any of the schools that do, whether they're X or Y schools, we wouldn't deduct it from that line. So it's a part in wherever we get a substitute, where they get deducted from, or according to wherever it goes. I know I have to figure that out because I looked at documents today and there's not, there's none of them that are going down in any of the schools. So I don't know where it's being taken out of, especially me. Anyway, it's just something, one more business side to look at. I do have a question. Why, I'm looking at HSA admin fees for technology and I'm getting, I'm seeing a request for $2,491 admin fees. For, for those things, that, that doesn't seem possible. I also noted that in somebody else's budget, the same amount, so I don't know what, where that's coming from.
You're talking lines 19 through 23?
Yeah, particularly the technology one.
I don't think, what, the administration fee is opposed to admin fees?
Yeah, I see what you mean, because I, if, given the other numbers, it looks like it's off a bit.
And I saw the same lines in, I think possibly Susan's. But, right, just off the top of my head. So that might be something that we need an explanation for.
Yeah, that's something that HR and the business always have, and look at those, all of those lines for us.
How, how this thing works, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I can't speak to the HR and then, I don't know, those are.
Yeah, everything that's in that gray section or benefits, we don't.
You were too strong.
Yeah, that's a part of the lottery. So that gets me down to, looking at the. Do you have a lot of problem with Johnson?
No.
Because you've got $500 on it for your Johnson officer, so just to know.
Yeah, that was just a standard amount that was recommended to me when I first started. So it's just been carried over. It's not been anything that, that I know that has been drawn down and I'm not even sure how we've been billed for ours.
We have them?
Yeah.
Yeah. We used officer, but we already done.
Okay, so he builds, you run, okay.
Well, we had, did manage a problem and I can just clarify. So this office was working with actually the town office, because I got a bill last year that was from the previous year. And so it was an issue from the town office not sending out their bills timely enough to come out of the correct budget. And so it actually wound up being a larger amount in last year's budget because it was not paid the year before. So we worked on that to try and get a little bit more corrected for this year. And so hopefully we have a timeline that gets it paid out so it's within our calendar, in our fiscal year, and pays out for their year too, so we're not crossing the years for the fiscal budget, so.
So we have not utilized that line item, but it is, honestly, because we did need to utilize it. And I kind of went on to the second page without, but it made. For Jason. Jason, since you're online, if you have something, you'll just kind of alert me to knowing, because I can't see you at this point, if you'll just kind of speak up if you have a question and interrupt so that we know that you have one.
Will do.
Thank you. So I'm looking at page 13, this point. The regular psych services are listed here as miscellaneous.
So that is our share of the school-based commission. And if you're looking at the 5341, the $30,000 line, okay, that's the one that we don't have right now.
Exactly, yeah. So that is our share of the school-based commission.
That's that, the 5341?
Yes.
It's shown.
Line 72.
Line 72.
It's shown in the budget last year.
Yes, yes. But if they don't have any of this corner, it's not going to go down. It shouldn't go for the surplus to be under the door.
Yeah.
Any other questions on page 13?
Well, I think the custodial thing, I've got a few questions on custodial.
Do you want to ask those now or you want to?
No, let's go through the.
Okay. So we're looking at 14. There seems to be a variety of internet subscription when you get that resource.
Yep.
We've got it under technology, the library and regular ed. Maybe one of the source.
So the, the first one, the SIRS technology, 5535, 5335. But the internet subscription specific to technology. Let me speak to that, the 3260. Oh, use them. So we'll skip that one for now. We'll go down to the next one.
He read your mind, sorry.
So the next one is very specific to library because there are some subscriptions that are required, you know, for checking in, checking out books, autologging, and also knowing what other libraries have. So that is very specific. So it's like Destiny and Junior Library Guild, World Book. Some of those are shared subscriptions with other schools as well. So that's very specific to the library and keeping the library functioning. And then the regular ed line item. Let's see, so that includes things for classroom teachers and the increase. Well, it's not an increase, but the, the, what we're, what we have is RAS kids, thinking power, brain pop, free flags, online investigations, which is on that over. Not, not using the textbooks, but more of the online materials. So those are, those are subscriptions that help teachers in person, but should we go remote? They're tools that they need to make remote learning very successful.
And we can use that, you know, probably for training and the classroom as well. We're not using it because hopefully we can get rid of some of that remote stuff that's out of classrooms.
Yeah, it's used both in-person and, and remote. But yeah, definitely not just remote learning.
So if I could just add on to the math menu part. So part of the training is when the teachers are taking a small guided math group, the other students who might be doing internet work online, they might be doing some pencil paperwork on, you know, in their desks and things. So other students are doing things when the teachers are taking a small group. So part of that is the online component. So they can go on and do some practice, some facts. They could go on and do some challenges for math and things too. So that's part of the online component. It's definitely not just for nerds. So they use it every day.
And I would also just add that there were a few items that were put up by the SIR grant as well. So there are some things that we use that are not there, like IXL, the math assessment and the work that we do with all learners and network as far as accessing math materials.
And some of those are long-term maintenance. Some of those, the maps assessment. And so at one time to pick up our local, we were able to put it into the SIR grant. A couple of years it'll go back to local, so. So, so yeah, obviously one of the biggest concerns is you shift things over to the SIR grant. The need doesn't go away, but the money will go away, so.
Yeah, and I did see that we did have both regular and custodial. Some COVID supplies this year have cut down some of those. So hopefully, looking forward to, you know, having quite so much of a need next year.
Yeah, our need primarily right now is masks for students that, you know, forget or they went red, want red, or whatever. You know, hand sanitizers, like things, we really did, like, we enjoyed what we currently had. Our biggest need is one, let me show you, that's those entire masks.
What is the line 119, 119? The technology?
SIRS technology.
The 3260?
5661.
Line 12.
Ricky returned just in time. I don't know if I can find that. Sorry, Ricky.
All right, I'll look it up. Line 118, right there. SERS technology for $10,355.
Down from 14?
Yes.
So that would be primarily Chromebooks cases, some software subscriptions that relate more to the management of systems more so than what kids use in the classroom, like iPad management. There's our iPad management platform. Sandy question?
Part of it, but if we go back then to line 85, you've got subscriptions up there for 5,000.
Yeah, so what you're seeing is more of an educational technology subscription versus like.
Oops, I got the wrong amount. Sorry, 2,260 up from 500.
Yeah, I don't know what that 85 is, but I'm assuming.
The 85 is just a numbering system.
No, 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 no. What the, what the sum of mine is exactly?
Because if you're doing supplies and subscriptions under 118, I'm not sure why they would have.
I, I think they're, I think, I think what he was, while he's looking that up, and he can correct me here if I'm wrong, because often I can be, is that line 85 is more like software subscriptions. Whereas the lower line, 119 or whatever it was, is more on subscriptions of, like leases for machines or a system that back, that we can back up our iPads with or get them fixed with. So it's hardware.
Yes.
So one is software, one's hardware.
So the actual line by line that I have of line 85 there, there's four items that encompass that. It's IXL, math, mystery science and typing power, which sum up to, maybe 260.
So on math, there is still was under SIR.
Yep, so it sounds like that's going to come out.
Right, so the only one left would be mystery science because that was not one that, Andy mentioned that would be covered. So we could change that one.
What was 87?
Line 87? I don't know what that is. It's the regular ed.
Because that's regular.
Yeah.
That, that is for subscriptions for teachers to use very specifically in the lab and then more software web-based subscriptions.
So it's the same thing as, it's 5535?
They're all 5535.
Yeah, I mean, basically what you're looking at is various departments. So like the technology department, 5535, that's that, you know, some 3260. And then there's the regular education in the school. I don't, I don't know what encompasses the $4,025.
So your figure is different than what we've got on here. We've got 4,025.
Good.
Okay, this was updated after mine.
I was going to say, yours is unfortunately only as good as they, you know, nearly terminated.
Okay, it's still, yeah. It's still, those three items are all subscription research items. So we'll be looking at those to be helpful.
Ask a question? Yes, about line 107. I'm just curious. This is what I get dinged at, at my job. This, what happens if it's a, if it's oil or something? Is that forecasted? Is that going to have to like?
Bottle, bottled gas, 107, that's propane.
Okay.
It's based upon.
What about oil? 107 says oil, bottled gas.
Again, we can't forecast. We, we try to as best as we can. Some of this pricing is based upon current prices, oil price and propane. The propane that, that we have actually there for Saxon River, that is based upon what they project suburban, and I spoke with them for the coming FY '23.
So, because I saw bottled gas when I, but.
It's kind of tough.
But oil didn't, and it's like, whoa.
Right, so I always give the principals numbers based upon gallon usage and we kind of try to go from there with the business office and such and figure out a good price based upon the projected pricing for the following year. It's a volatile market, actually.
That's just, it's the first line I will blow through every year at large, so.
And the food item?
You will this year.
Young Tim. 109, I guess it is.
So that is, so that's under administration. That is food for staff, so they're doing on them and as elementary principals. Well, I think, I think we were in on that as well. We agreed on a dollar amount. And so we were consistent among the schools. So if we were to do like lunch before the end of, or before the beginning of the year, you know, just like that sort of thing. So it's a very nominal amount to say thank you at the end of the year or beginning of the year until the special day or something. And it certainly doesn't cover all of it, but it is, it is something and helps my personal budget.
Your question, negative balance, what happens when the 250 is gone?
Yeah, so that is, that's something that has been in this budget since I came. And what, so this current year, we were again universal meals, which we didn't know. So that won't be, it won't be a case. But next year, we might not do universal meals. And that is really to cover like if a family.
Right, what happens when the money's gone though? Is it like? Is that, you know, that's my question. As times get tougher, yes, times gets tougher.
It goes negative.
Yeah, it just goes negative. Okay, good. I mean, I'm okay with it going negative. It's like, it doesn't just stop like, sorry, not today, kids. Like one of those.
I think they're, I think they have to kind of have to, yes, it's.
Right, yeah.
And this is more, you know, if you're working with family and, and at the end of the year, there's still some negative balance.
I got you. I'm like, if ever there's a placing, it's been on this year. Probably have my support on that.
Yeah, they're all paid this year and there is some push to have that continuity and see where that, where that ends up. Any other questions on 14?
Rick, the, just, just to get acquainted here, line 73. That's the first custodial word.
14,000.
5352.
The dollar on it, 14,000.
Oh, that's.
14,000.
Other technical services.
5350, yep.
That's the first page of your budget. And what does that include?
So that's all basically what used to be all our contracted services line. It includes.
I have it right here if you want me to read it. So alarm and fire system.
Right.
I go inspections.
Elevator. Yep, extermination, yes. Control contractors for our, our HRU units. This year, all cool about three-year. Aera, asbestos reinspection, slave room repair, front lawn. Yep, things of that nature.
So it's up because of, there's a three-year deal or something?
Well, if that's part of it, there's also the, let me see. So you have, let's see, maybe we'll. So yes, that was added on this year. I don't, the bi-annual boiler inspections are added on. This is something we also added on, which brought it up quite a bit, which is something we need to do. $3,000 annual sleep repair for our old, our, that old 1950s, 15 section building, which we've been in the past, had somebody come out. Tried to on a yearly basis, so I'd like to nail that down and have it through doxy roofing. An annual inspection and place and care replacement as needed. I got a much higher price in hoop from the Lonsins, but look, I'd like to stick with doxy. I think it's a much fairer price.
No, you need to do it. All right, what about, what about 78? What's that?
78. So 5431, non-techno, technology repair maintenance, 10,000. So. So the 14, non, oh yeah, okay, non-techno. Right, so that's basic money. So I average what we spend on repairs every year. And I go across, I don't know what I gave Laura this past year, but it's usually based on a three, five, seven, eight, 10-year average. It's hard to predict because you never know what you're going to get as far as repairs go. So as I explained to Laura in my budget sheet that I gave her, that is based on an average of $9,200 over the last 10 fiscal years in 2019. That's worth $10,000 now.
Just to, to review.
Yes. Yeah, they've changed some of the naming. Yes, that non-technological repair or basic building repairs.
Laura, how often do your dues and fees that you have on the last page in the 19, 20 and 21 get used? Can you give me one of them? 119, 112, 113.
Well, I see. So mine, that's VPA, the Law and Justice Association. The library is quality. And the last one, these new students are rich for field trips.
Okay, so those are for field trips?
Yeah. I'm sure there'll be more questions, but that could just something to think about. It's important for us to give some, some more thought. So we need to be off the hook and try to send it all through to your questions. Do we need a little bit to pull out the next section of their packets? Or, or Laura, if you're already looking at it? So similar to.
Central.
Central school, yes. So, Laura, we're trying to be mindful of these pocketbooks, but at the same time, make sure that our students have what they need for education. So many of our line items are very similar.
It's on page eight.
Yeah, it's in, yep.
So there are some minor increases in the foster doing business or professional services, unfortunately. And just be mindful of the medical needs of students. So we have some more diabetics that we have to accommodate for students with audiology needs. So we're trying to make sure, we're planning for those as well, that is not budgeted prior to that. Sue will be adding some of those too, some of those people are transferring to the middle school. But then just being mindful of correcting some line items that we had had in the past and then also ensuring that they're populated correctly for the needs. We had an issue this past year with a late bill for copiers. You'll see it under services and, and a long line in court. And it was not budgeted correctly, unfortunately. So we had to change that to increase our budget for rentals. Um, fifty-four forty-two, it says rental equipment and vehicles, we do not have cars, through the record, that's just a line item title. Um, and so unfortunately, it was only budgeted for two thousand, but that's two thousand per copier, and these are for copiers and leases, um, and then the actual copies for the copier. Unfortunately, we just got a big bill, um, that was retroactive to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, so we had to pay that, uh, it was coming out of this year's budget, but then we're hoping to write, fund it as we go forward, and so it's two thousand dollars per copier and per copies, not just two thousand dollars for the year. Um, and so that is for four copiers, and we have within the building that is accessed by special ed, a lot of other resources as well. So that's a larger increase than someone that is on that, unfortunately. Capital projects is the big one. Think, just to make sure, Andy, just for fifty-four ninety, who was the one similarly that maybe ESSR funded?
Many, many of those funds, um, those projects, um, potentially to be funded through ESSR, um, and we're talking about, um, heat entryways, or keyless entryways, and stuff like that, or cameras.
Doors.
We're looking at how do we manage our buying power and utilizing, because all the buildings need it, so why not buy the same system for all the buildings as opposed to individual different systems? And then that way, because it all falls on Ricky to support everything we do here, um, especially when it comes to technology, to make sure he can support, and he doesn't have to support multiple platforms. Uh, but then there's like, in there, Rick, I'm gonna assume in, in this studio, it's, it's some of the stuff with the kitchen, and, um, I know with the roof, um, maybe like the
Yes, um, yep, well, and that was number one on our list, it, it was actually funding to cover, uh, this, obviously, the area, building envelope. And it's, uh, any good thing, that would be really great for the district to get all of ours updated, but, you know, a lot of them.
Is that in this budget?
That is, uh, I don't know what you have on turn out there, Jim, but, um, I believe it should be.
One eighty-six, potentially, okay, so you're at the fifteen-five, okay.
That's what's in this, this head.
Okay.
Yeah, so we had, um, Rick updated the online version after we printed out that, because because we, we're anticipating majority of those large projects to be covered out of ESSR funds, and so we're trying to, like, really look budgeting, but we just, two shifts passing in the night.
So you're seeing that, you know, line eight, I'm sorry.
What's, what is, what's in the fifteen-five, is that moving?
For, for, for line eighty-five, is that what you have?
No, fifteen-five, the fifteen thousand five hundred.
Yeah, that's line, line eighty-five.
It's eighty-five.
So, so that, again, that was two shifts passing in the night, I hadn't had a chance to get with Rick, so I was anticipating based on a ten thousand, but knowing that there was another needed project in the building that probably wouldn't ESSR fund it, I came up with that amount.
Well, so the doors.
Fifteen, the fifteen, something like that.
So that fifteen-five, we need to leave in there, or we need to look at that and see whether it can come out?
I think what we are gonna need to do is go back, look at the capital, um, large capital projects, I mean, the, the biggest issue with the ESSR funds, with our ESSR funds, is we have to look at how did it fit into those three buckets, and we have to do, uh, a construction, uh, application, and we have to go through that whole process, so it's not a, let's turn around and fix the leak tomorrow, and then, um, and then, if we're buying equipment, there's a whole process that we have to go through with an equipment purchase, so we have to get approval prior to purchasing things. So if it's a, again, if it's a, we need to get the lock fixed on the door, that's a quick turnaround. If we're looking at a whole security system for all of our schools, we can do an equipment piece, a construction project, and then quickly approve it properly.
All right, so, but you were looking, looking back and updating us as to what that figure needs to be then?
But I think that, I think my, my point is that if this is to cover needed roof repairs, I'm all for it. I definitely, definitely wanna fix the room. But it sounds like that is, you're using it.
It won't be the whole, I mean, the roof, it's quite an extensive.
Oh, it's a big
Right, right, so it's that, I mean, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars, so that wouldn't cover, you know, the whole room.
We'll get it, we'll get it broken down.
Great, sounds fine.
I'd like to, I'd begin like the staff, the staff.
Sure, sure.
The, uh, as, as I said, this is what drives everything.
Okay, yeah.
And, uh, the classroom teachers, of course, that assumes, uh, two.
Right, two for each one, yeah.
If in the second grade.
Second grade is a question right now.
I think you might, you might be up, we need to, to have nine there. Um, the, uh, there's, you've got, uh, you've got, uh, an art teacher, music, uh, library, PE.
Right, library and PE are full-time, the art and music we share with Saxons River, so she has point four, we have point six.
The, the one, point, the one-point-o music is, is point six?
It's point six, does it say one-point-o?
It says one-point-o.
So that's, that's just meaning that they
It's just a whole, one person.
And that, that you're looking at, Rick, is not reflecting a, what we, the, in accounting will be that PE.
Right.
That's accounting to, it's a full-bodied person, it's not, so that's why that, they're saying that, but it is a point six at Sax, at Central, and a point four.
Because it does show point four on the, uh, on the Saxons River one.
Okay.
So it was an error, I thought, I apologize.
Right, and then, and then you have the one guidance and the, and the next, and you have a, a full-time physician, it's not
You do have a full-time clinician, yes.
That's, that's not an HCRS.
That is HCRS.
That is HCRS.
So what, that, we have a, a school adjustment counselor, which is our guidance, I believe it's called, on the
Yes, yeah.
And then there's a HCRS clinician, um, that is the, you're in special ed as well, it's in school, at our school.
That one's pretty true, that, of, um, SU funds down, and then the
Yes, yes.
And then we get assessed.
Right, you get assessed a part, portion of that, and then there is an HCRS, you may see a couple times, um, we do have some students who require a one-to-one, um,
Behavioral interventionist.
Thank you, a behavioral interventionist, an SBI, behavioral interventionist, and so those are separate contracts that HCRS will bill us for, and then we pay for, similar to a parry, um, but sometimes they're a little bit more than a parry, because they need the behavioral component that's trained for HCRS.
And that's, that is or is not specialized?
It's not necessarily. It could be a student on a biohazard plan, it, it depends, so it depends on the student.
If, if it were a student services cost, then it comes to student services, and yes, you, if it were a regular cost, it would come out of local.
Now, it depends upon the way it's termed, is what we're talking about?
No, it depends on the needs of the student.
It's a student, right, so it depends on the student's a five-oh-four or a nine-Ep student, how it's billed.
Thank you, it's clear, thank you.
And you have, you have two custodians.
We do, I'm warning, uh, our unit.
Now, the, I didn't, I didn't ask you, Laura, the, uh, do you have regular ed parents?
Or regular ed parents are specific to five-oh-four plans, so five-oh-four is a regular ed service, so we do have students whose five-oh-four plans require
Where would that be in your budget?
That would be under, uh, number three, maybe, is that right, or not? Typically, it should be.
That would be, yes, number three.
Fifty-one, twenty-one.
Okay.
Yes.
So those, those are five-oh-four related.
Right, I don't have any just general, where you're in the classroom, and there are activities to
Yeah, yes, the, uh, in those, for your, uh, Carrie, your parent educated, uh, for the, the regular education parents, that would be five-oh-four.
Five-oh-four funded, exactly, yes.
Laura, you may have the admin fees on the, the two sheets, and they're not on yours, is that something that should be seen? The FSA, HCR, HRA, admin fees.
I believe, so, I just wanna make sure, are you talking fifty-two eighteen, or fifty-two seventeen? I suspect so. Let me just see, I'm trying to compare.
Yeah, right.
Yes, I believe so, so what had happened is I hadn't taken insurance before, and I am on the school insurance now, so I suspect that may not have been budgeted, unfortunately, for the HS, for the FSA.
Because I'm seeing it both on
No, I, I see what you're saying now, yeah, sure.
Although I'm seeing that two thousand four hundred ninety-one on both of the
But I'm not seeing, you're right, because I'm not seeing it right now.
So, the, oftentimes, when the system, as, as, as Carrie had said, like, they don't have a car, right, and it's listed as a vehicle in here, so the, the, the coding or the words are not necessarily always, exactly, so it doesn't, I, I wanna get it specific for you, it doesn't, just because it says admin, it may not mean administration that we have, it may be some administrative end on, on the, on the company side. So, without, without that clear, without getting you a clear answer, we're gonna be guessing here.
Exactly, that's why I'm saying, you have to probably compare those for the three schools, to make sure that we're not getting, you know, getting it
Just put on the same way on, on all of them, and, and
The pictures I don't want, that actually should be in there.
Carrie, I'm sorry to ask you, so, you have one full-time hire, or is it point six?
Point six, and then the other point four is the four.
Right, that's, okay.
Uh, the other thing, and, and it may have also been in yours, which I didn't look at, and it was, um, the tuition reimbursement. Um, I'm not quite sure why there would be an increase in the tuition reimbursement. There hasn't been any change in our contract that we need to keep, if there should be, despite you were having any more personnel than before.
No, do you have a specific one, that you're
Uh, thirty-nine, it starts on thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, um, Laura's is, um, forty-one, or forty-two, maybe. If, high priority increases, which, that might be something that's still looking. Definitely to figure out. So, contractually, I guess the next wondering bit is, we need to figure, discuss that, is the CBA says that any employee under the CBA is entitled to a UVM course, because that this would not cover any person who wanted to take a course. That's only like the price of one course, for one person, that doesn't even include, you know, if you had ten members that said that they wanted to take a course, um, that would, how that would cover that?
Like, the pool is set up a certain way too, so, the pool is set up not covering, it won't cover, um, it's written, so.
I think in the CBA, the new CBA, it does.
Yeah, if, the pool is not covered in this one, I'm not.
And so I think it covers the price of the three companies.
I guess, well, had to look at
Yeah, but
What did they cover the full course?
My, my understanding was that line is not reflective of the UVM, but it's of other, like, there are other smaller ones that people might want to go to, that you, that you might approve that don't end up
Being the UVM's course.
Ending up at the, at the SU outlets, so that is my understanding for, uh, that line to like, again, um.
That makes sense. So, these lines, again, these are lines that are generated by the, um, by HR, um, so we do have to go back to the
Right.
Do you know what cash and move is on line six to seven?
It's a bit of a spoiler for the
I can, I can, yeah, so, um, how it was explained to me when I first started was that was for if someone did not take advantage of the insurance, and
Online, it's a real chance, that makes sense, yeah. Yeah, because there's a payment out for them.
I thought those people are all
Pardon?
All what?
No, if they don't take insurance with, with our medical insurance, ours, so you can
It's a sort of a stipend, per se, is
Yeah, I understand.
For not taking insurance, I think, well, that, and I don't think much.
Now, the seventy-two, line seventeen, did you already come through?
The professional development one?
No, regular ed, psych, psychology.
Okay, still, I, you're just
Are you asking me?
Like, uh, services, okay, okay, so from, are we, just to clarify, because I, one's regular ed, one's staff development, one was three thousand, one was a thousand.
No, no, Rick, he's, he's down to fifty-three, forty-one, it's thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, that one, so regular ed, so it's just, okay, seventy-three, it's online, so, okay, um, those are for, um, services for a student particularly, so that comes in from the HCRS, this is the part that we're working on, the coding part, whereas, um, it might be a parent, or it might be a behavioral interventionist. Um, and so that is the contracted fee that's coming out for that particular person, and so that's a salary for, so it's all services, um, but it's a salary of somebody that is working with a particular student, best of my knowledge.
And this is, this is not a special ed.
No, this is a regular ed.
And so that, that's the cost of the behavior interventionist, so that's, so
And that's different than the, or is that the one that shows in the staffing?
That's, that, it, so, it's a job, so when we work with HCRS and Success Beyond Six, which is a program, so that, in that program, HCRS has a grant that covers, uh, a portion of the, of the staff's total salary, and then we cover the other part, so, so here, we're thirty-five thousand dollars, we're covering probably, um, not all of the staff's salary, but a majority of it, and they're covering staff salary and benefits. I kinda wanna think about it that way, and so, um, it's a contracted service, it's not an employee of the district. So anything, anything in staffing at the top is an employee of the district.
Right.
So, is that just for one student? And if it's thirty-five thousand, I can see we're getting benefits in that, and still, it seems like a real crime, that then, only one student, still, how much time they're spending with a student, which
The one-to-one.
We, we can't control the cost, you know, HCRS.
I was just wondering, you know, how much, finally, I know, as you said, some of the ones.
Yeah.
But is this the one that's on the list?
So, there's two different components for HCRS, because we have the clinician, who is the one that's meeting with students and doing counseling services. Then we also have the behavior interventionists, uh, and so we have a couple of those, a couple of students have behavior interventionists. Uh, and so, the, the regular ed parent component is under the top part, where it's the parent educator, and then this one is the contracted one that's actually behavior-based, that's through HCRS.
Is in the, the companion one is the next to the last one, the one thirty-three?
Unfortunately.
Regular ed, psych.
Okay, so my line is different, so.
Forty-five thousand.
Right, and that's also another student who has a behavior interventionist.
We will need to take a look at two, why there's a discrepancy of two dollars.
There are two of them, they weren't way separated, did you?
And other, just so you know, also, so we have what's called the what I need for room, the behavior intervention room, so other schools are billed for those So other schools are billed for those, so the student resides right now at our school. But their para in other cases are paid from other budgets too. But these are specifically to Central. Students who are at Central, who are in Central and they're with their paras. But we do have other paras that reside with our student at the school, but they are billed back to Racton or billed back to Westminster or at some other facility because the student is in our program. So somewhere especially like the intensive needs program, those students of those services and they're housed at Westminster. Our students are housed here. But the other bills, so outside of this, you'll have other paras that are at our school physically, but they're billed back to their schools.
There are other budgets.
Yeah, but crossing guard on one thirty-two is showing nothing, but I did see it somewhere else. I'm curious. Is there a possibility that some of these things were put in twice?
No, it's under, I believe it's.
Misalani.
Under miscellaneous, miscellaneous tab, which I don't know if the doctor would.
Unfortunately, somebody's trying to bill us for all of the crossing guards. So we were trying to.
Oh, there it is.
Share the cost.
Yeah, because miscellaneous is lines that affects the three of the schools, not just one in particular. Does anyone have any other questions on this? There may be one thing that is in fees on those and seeing if all of those are needed.
Yes. So I wrote, made some notes, double check of things that. The dues and fees for the students, the board is saying is for the student, the field trips, which fortunately are not quite happening where you'd like.
No.
Maybe next year. Hopefully maybe before the end of the year.
Maybe it's a good advice. Capital projects, should we go to check on, see what we have on that? Again, the internet subscription stuff, so that's all of that. There's a SU assessment for technology on there and for regular ed.
So that would be.
The regular ed is listing it as zero. So.
Yeah. So the technology one is one, was it maybe fifth or whatever it is? So Andrew Petruski's salary goes with the elementary schools. And so it's one component of it. What is fourth, fifth, and that's.
Like point two FTE.
Okay.
I'm sorry. That's salary?
So that's salary.
Because you've also got CES technology salary at the top. Under one twelve.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is off that line. I'm kind of wondering it myself.
Which line?
Which one? We've got line one twelve as technology salary. You've also got line one hundred as technology with an SU assessment. Usually the SU assessments are not put in this.
Yeah, that shouldn't go there. That, that is up on fifty-five ninety-three. They're all SU assessments. That should have been a zero. Because that we won't go to the assessment tab that was moved.
So it fits me seven, seven two should be out.
Okay.
It's line one hundred.
And COVID supplies for technology, one twelve? Five hundred, custodial, five hundred fifty-six twelve.
Unfortunately, mine is line one thirteen.
So, so I, I don't know where these numbers came from because they were all supposed to be zeroed out because all COVID supplies have covered up the ESSR.
Right.
So, and, and all the budgets, and I know that, I noted that under Saxons River, all COVID supplies are paid out of the ESSR funds right now. So all of those line items will be zeroed.
That's a lot. They, they are currently.
Yes.
Okay.
They're currently, all, all that's, all COVID supplies. And going forward for the next fifteen years.
Okay.
Other than that.
Wherever it is, where I'm going, it's two dollars.
Yeah.
I, I, I've got it. It's one of the.
Is that in three, custodial for COVID supplies?
Oh, COVID supplies, yeah.
So then I'll have to take that over to that line. That's the two. I think it's one of two and one of three on the one.
Yeah.
Seven two to. Everything that will be, if it's six twelve, I count that it's six twelve should be at zero.
Okay.
So we do still have that.
We're going to do a lot more reading. Looks like, yeah.
Yeah. So there was nothing unfortunately budgeted for some of the line items there. And so to make sure we were.
Take care of.
Right. Want people to come back soon. And so just so you know where ours has. Maybe, so that goes by staff number. So we have more staff. And so that's a dollar in our first graph number. But we're in negative balance payments. We have zero. So we are universally funded for the rest of the ones outside of COVID. So ours will be, we don't have payments for students. So we don't need to worry about that. And that's related to our new component. So ours is separate from COVID. And it's just numerous of practices.
Okay. Set it up on this one for now. If you want to. Let's see. My sorry, quick questions that everyone has. Hi. You're up, Susan.
All right. Well, glad I get to go last because I know what the questions have been.
That's right.
Wrote, wrote down all the, all the answers over here. So as with my, my esteemed colleagues, the top two sections are salary, benefits, et cetera. What you see, you go down to starting with line one twenty-eight. For the middle school. This actually starts the lines where we get to control or have input. We have, we have some increases. We have some decreases. A line one forty-six, code fifty-four ninety, capital project. That's two hundred and seventy-nine five. That information has been provided by Rick. Hundred ninety thousand of that covers roofing for the building.
We're going to.
Line, it's actually line one forty-seven. It's highlighted there. So the overall amount is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, hundred ninety thousand of which is for roofing. And then we have some really important masonry work that needs to be taken here. We have some parking lot work, some sprinkler and a management system. Most of this, as Andy has said, will be covered by ESSR, but we did put it in here anyway.
This is on page five of yours? It's not on page five? And it's, it's line. It's line one forty-six and we have ten thousand dollars in the debt. It was just to reiterate. Two, two ships in a night. So, but again, I, I tried to anticipate that there's always capital improvements of, of something, you know, like if all of a sudden the window broke here, we're going to need to fix it. And I don't want to tell you that no money. So I put that in as a placeholder than you put in the larger things that we had to buy from the.
We do have some funds that, that are capital budget funds that are set aside, that if you have something, I expect if you can come to the board and say, hey, I do need some funds out of there. They do need to be brought to the board, but, but we do have something set aside for that. Not huge, but there is, there is a fairly nice amount.
So on the budget sheets that you're looking at, we start at line one twenty-nine and, and continue down. The, the numbers or the amounts pretty much coincide year to year. There are a couple of areas where there are slight increases and slight decreases. Obviously, that capital improvement project, we hope can be covered by ESSR. But line, comparing year to year, the lines are pretty similar. If you, with the exception of line one seventy-six. Thank you, Andy. We need a new piano.
Yeah.
Yeah. We need a new piano in the auditorium. And so that represents two thousand dollars for piano. We hope that we'll be able to get one for two thousand dollars.
It's on a ship.
It's on a ship. Off the coast of Los Angeles.
I think mine is off.
One seventy-six.
So, so, so she's referring to the spreadsheet lines that are gray on the side. And we numbered them because you guys don't get those spreadsheet lines.
Oh, so it'd be, it would be for you, be one seventy-five. I apologize.
No, no, no. You're fine. I just.
So that represents a two thousand dollar increase that will hopefully cover the cost of the new piano in the auditorium. But by and large, the numbers are pretty similar. I've noted on the sides there where there have been some increases, where there are some decreases in each of the lines. I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
What is the, for our line one twenty-eight, sorry, one twenty-nine? Middle school, regular education, professional ED services. What, what is that?
Oh, I'm not really sure. Professional.
Hold on, I got.
This is guidance, professional services.
Uh, it's middle school, regular ed, professional EDU services for a hundred and three thousand.
The little one right below it is also not forgotten.
Yeah, that was my next question.
So we'll have to get back here on those because those I don't know.
Yeah, those were carryover numbers from one year to the next from Southland Way. I, I didn't hear you.
It went down. It used to be a hundred and thirty-four and now it went down to one hundred and three.
I'd be curious to know what it is too.
But, but in that area, they would have to be contract services or something.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Because student services pays for the HCRS clinic.
I have a feeling that's, that's the area. Now, Susan, the, your projected enrollment, we didn't get a enrollment sheet when that packet came out. What is your estimate for?
Well, again, it, it depends on the number of students that Angela's going to send me, number of students Liz is going to send me and the number of students that Carrie is going to send me. Back along, a couple of months ago, when we started working on this, I reached out to them. And I don't, can't remember off the top of my head the exact number, but it's right where we are right now.
Right over the two thirty.
Yeah. If, if Angela sends me the number she says, and if Liz sends me the number she says, say with Carrie, we'll be right where we are right now.
Pretty stable.
Yeah, it should be pretty static.
Okay. So then. Under classroom teachers, you have fourteen. How does that break up?
I have.
Fifth, sixth?
I have three regular ed classroom teachers in fifth and in sixth, and I have four in both seventh and in eighth. I have an art, full-time, these are full-time positions now, full-time art, music, band, health, PE and library. Then I also, in addition to that, I have two guidance counselors, one HCRS clinician. Then I also have a half-time person who is funded under substance abuse.
But those aren't coming out of local.
No, they're not coming out of local.
So the HCRS and the, and the SAP are funded out of.
Right.
One out of special ed, one out of the.
So this, on the sheet that I had, there was a second art teacher. Did I say?
A second art teacher?
Yeah. Let's see. I wouldn't have. I just, I figured it was a typo.
One art teacher.
Oh, yes. No, no, it's a typo. I only have one art teacher. Sorry.
Okay. Two guidance.
Yes.
One nurse.
Yeah.
Now, what about the interventionist? These, yes, sir?
The interventionist that I have now, I believe. Yeah, I believe it's local fund. It falls under the same category that my colleagues have. However, my interventionist is now my full-time eighth grade science teacher.
Because it, there's, there's two lines here. It says interventionist and then the one I'm looking at, then the next one says one interventionist currently filling in as the eighth grade science.
Right. That's just, that was identifying. There's only one.
There's only one.
Yeah, there's only one. But I identified in that document that they're not doing intervention work. They're the full-time science teacher.
So in the, like in the fifth, sixth with the three, three, what is, what are the, what are the specialties or do they have combined specialties? Do you have like history?
I have, in fifth grade, I have an ELA teacher and a history teacher. And then I have a math sciences teacher, one of them that does both math and science. And then in sixth grade, I have a teacher who does math and history, does both of them. And then I have an ELA in science. ELA in science.
Those are two separate.
Yes, yes.
And then for seventh and eighth, it's?
For the four core, math, science, social studies, language arts.
Is the MS operation of plants, line twenty? Is, you've got line nine with substitutes. And then you've got twenty, non-clerical generalists operation of plants. So would you explain those?
And then you've got 20 non-clerical generalists operation of plants. So if you expand those. And 17 also.
So nine operation plants would be, uh, again, like was explained before, that, that's money put aside for paying substitutes as needed.
Then what was the other one for source?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Operation plants, professional, technical. I'm expecting, Rick, that's probably people you bring in.
Well, the, uh, the one line I am responsible for is the, uh, operation plan and all that. So the 51, 81 Jordan, Rick, is that correct? 51, 31.
That's the.
Nine substitutes.
Those are salaries for, um, for the employees or, um.
It's the overtime for the custodians.
I, I got.
51, 81 is your, uh.
That's your quotes.
That's salaries.
That's 51, 71. 51, 71.
Is that when you bring in the person to check the elevator and that kind of stuff?
Cause that's a sal, that's a salary.
Oh, this is a salary line.
That's what 51, that is. 51, 71, which is operation, it's, um.
Is that Rick's salary that's lit up?
I think it's Rick.
We've got two of them. One is, one's 42,000, 912, and the other one is 111,000, 417.
And I think.
One's the boss and one's the, the, uh, the staff.
Yeah, they're not together.
You have three or four custodians here.
In this building, I have three.
Three. So that's how it is.
One day custodian, two nights custodian.
Yeah.
So which, what goes with that here?
So there's, there's four. 51, 71 is the, uh, is the manager. And then 51, 81 for the two, uh, students.
So is that a continued source?
71, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll get, I'll get, I'll get that defined for you specifically. Uh, I, I, I agree with, with Jim. I think that's where it is, but, but.
So, I'll clarify that.
After school programs, Susan, what's, um, what's extended school like? What does that mean?
That's our after-school program.
That's also grant funded, a lot of it, isn't it?
Through 21C, yeah.
Twenty, sorry, I'm on line, I'm on line four.
I don't think we have a 21C.
You do. Ames is 21C, but it's, uh, so the way they.
I know that one, that's a grant.
Yeah, 21C is the, is the, is the title of the grant. So, and 21C is a, what they call it, sunsetting grant. So that means they award you money over a five-year period and the monies are reducing over that five-year period. And the, the way the grant is written is the school has to match it, right? So, so the school's rising. Typically what happens is as you get closer to that end of that, that year five, we're rewriting the grant and being able to extend it. But so the school does have a component that they're responsible for of, of matching or not a true match fund, but.
Do you know where we are on that five years?
Uh, I want to say, don't quote me on this one, year three potentially. Uh, I don't know, it might even be year two, one. Because what happened was this past year, they worked to align both, um, the one here at the middle school, which is Ames, and the one that's at Westminster and Athens Graff and, um. So those three buildings are under two 21C grants that were brought under one umbrella.
They're all aging.
They may be on different cycles and, and the whole point. And then, and then at Central and, and Saxon's River, we're paying for a similar type of programming after-school using ESSER funds. With the hopes that as the ESSER, as, as ESSER goes away, we'll write an entire one umbrella 21C for the whole SUV. Which will make managing it, uh, happen a lot better.
Okay.
Cause that was the whole point. You got this one over here, this one over there.
Each one is independent.
Okay. So are there any questions, Paul, specifically on those?
Thank you, ladies.
I have a general question because I would like to know what bond you're paying long-term. I'm trying to think of what's, uh, what's that we're covering.
Well, central, I mean, this, the thing is.
That's what I'm thinking. I just, I want.
And we also have some bond improvement, Saxon's River.
We still?
And, uh, yeah, cause those, those problems were kind of around 2006. And I think it was, uh.
Yeah, here I. Let me, let me calm off. I mean, what?
I can't imagine Western, uh, that's actually really, really, uh, central.
So. Wait, there are the, on these two lines.
There's one chunked out and there's still the expenses. So I was just trying to figure out what, what the bonds were.
It's all on the mouse.
Pardon?
It's all on the mouse?
No, what they're covering, what the bonds are for.
So you wanna, you wanna break down the bonds? So you'd like to know how much of, how much of the $723 is going to L12's middle school? How much of the $723 is going to?
What it was for.
Yeah, okay. Right, I think, I think there's, there's, there were two bonds floated and so how much is?
There are ages that pay from that line both of them.
Right, so.
When we did the, uh, when Central and Saxon's River was down. The, uh, we qualified their state funding program. It basically paid 50% cost. That, that sunset, uh, shortly after that. And so the, let's say the total project was $10 million. I think the, the amount of bonding we had to do was something of $5 million. Then of course, with the middle school, it was like a 10 or 11 million dollar project, uh, that we had to fund all of it. And so the bigger, the bigger amount, the one that's going to be with us longer is the, or the middle school.
Yeah, so I, I mean, it's, they'll just be breaking out, where are we on the bonds and, and?
Right.
Yeah. Are we going to pay any off? It's like that car. Two, two more months.
Two fingers.
Two more months, two more months. It's like, it's like when your kid goes out of sight.
The one I've written questions on, I just don't know what I was using. To say, well, my question's probably in there as well. So, um, I think he's really a lot to help us out and under very, very, um, a lot, lot better explanations. Um, I would ask that maybe for the next one, for if we could see where the, um, revenue is coming from, because we also need to report that out. It wasn't done in the report last year. A lot of textbooks have been telling me they really need to see that as well. So if we could maybe let us know where we stand on those things. Now that, and when do you think we will be having an audit report? Um, so I will follow up with the auditors tomorrow, plus, um, we'll still finalize things for them. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I guess, um, we'll do director's comments first because I think we do need a very short executive session. Which we'll invite, um, administration. I don't know whatever the new year principles is from, but they, they want to support of that. We need to do that for negotiations and, um, just clarification on a couple of personnel. We'll probably discuss something, uh, last week, this one last, how was that? One question that's carryover from last one. All right, so let's do director's comments. Do you want to start?
I, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Jason Benson?
Not really sure if it's director's comments or just an overall statement to the budget proposals for tonight. I'd like to see a, a breakout of the expected ESSER relief that we'll be getting for some of those large capital improvements. I think it's pretty necessary to know the real numbers and the hopeful numbers. That's all. Thank you.
I apologize to, to my board members because that was one thing I was going to ask for, Jason. Thank you for saying that. Um, let me go back just for a second. Um, is there other info that we need for the next meeting other than what we've asked for? That we agreed, if there is something, you could also let me know that and if something comes up in between. Um, and no items that are on here should increase, um, without documentation and supported information to show, show the need in any of those areas. And hopefully we can get some of them down with the conversations that we had tonight. So let me go back to director's comments now, Jim.
Well, I, I know the, I just want to encourage parents to, uh, get their children immunized. I know it's scary in many respects, but, uh, it's, uh, it's the best way to get out of this. And you hear the principals talk about the disruptions, uh, even with, with class being held. The disruptions that, that the, that this pandemic is causing, uh, each day in the classroom. And I think that to get, to achieve the goals that we all want for our kids, uh, we, we need to have more stability. And, uh, and I think the key to stability is immunization. So please, please think it over, think it hard and, uh, and get your child vaccinated. Thank you.
I really appreciate those comments, uh, Jim, uh, particularly because having COVID is, can be far worse than that day or so of having a shot. And I say that from a person who has a extreme response to those shots. I had my booster and spent several days very, very, very sick. Whereas I have other family members that have no response at all. So, yeah. But children are attempting to have less response and it is protecting them. So yes, absolutely. I echo what Jim is saying. I just appreciate everyone here tonight. The information on the budget was tremendous, much more information than we've had in the last couple of years. So it's a really nice breakdown and a really good start to what we're looking at. Joy to respect, a lot of the questions that my old board members are asking. Really appreciative of those as well. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, invite the administration, the premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved as substantial discipline.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jim.